I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First we'll do roll call. Chuck Campbell.
Pardon.
Bridgette Hayes, here. Earl Moore.
President.
Curtis.
Here.
Ward. First thing is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting as presented. These are the meeting minutes from Thursday, February 2nd. I'll move to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? All opposed? Curtis abstains. Next is approval of claims and payroll. So the total amount of the claims ending February 16th, 2023, I'll move to approve the claims. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Curtis abstains. The first item on the unfinished business is roles and responsibilities. So... So for a couple meetings now, we just talked about roles and responsibilities. And we have a list that we voted on last week. I just want to make sure that, is there any more discussion on the roles and responsibilities as it was presented at the last meeting? The areas are Police Department, Bridgette Hayes; Garden Department, Earl Moore; Water Sewer, Chuck Campbell; Street Department, Curtis Ward; Golf Course, Bridgette Hayes; Pool, Earl Moore; Special Projects, Chuck Campbell; and Main Street, Curtis Ward. Any additions or discussion?
Yeah, I'd like that. I mean, we had some discussion on this. We have the board of heads, of course, a very important. They're responsible for their people. They're responsible for giving the work they're done. If there's a problem, we know who to help us for our problem. We all, we have, I like to feel that we have a little transparency here. If a department head had a problem, I feel if they can come to the meeting and present it, as have done in the past, or if they feel that they want to wear someone in their department, they can contact any councilman, whoever are comfortable with that. Some people are comfortable with one person, and not comfortable with somebody else. I feel that it's very uncomfortable with a person that is appointed every time. Other than the woman I'm here with, and have something else too. I like to hear stuff straight from the horse's mouth. I feel that if it has to go through somebody else's mouth, just one little word to us could change the whole story, or be misinterpreted. And I don't, I'm going to answer that, and why we want to do it.
Any other discussion?
I would agree with the department heads, and we are taking to all of this, except having liaisons too. I prefer not to be liaisons, one to either the person, but if something about ongoing re-chaos may be regarding an issue, do a map or a tab in terms of the public hearing at the end of the June hearing, the board head updates, and you talk to the council as a whole.
I would be for it either way, but this is not actually just for complaints, it's something in general, just having a liaison just as spokesperson when they can't be at the meeting or whatever. Markham.
So as I said before, as I said before, this is something that other committees do, other boards do, the commissioners do this. When I've gone to these meetings with other committees, they do it as well. It's not a hard and fast rule hearing in charge of a certain department, that that department can only come to you. It's a really informal relationship, but what it does is, it provides an informal relationship. It provides just a little bit of oversight, so that if they do have an issue, they have a designated person that should be there to help them. They don't have to be, they don't have to come to the person assigned to them, or vice versa. It's just for the board member to be a little bit more familiar with one department, so that we can all rely on each other and be a better team together, because we each have one little area that we kind of focus on, but it's not exclusive in any way, in any order, or in any department, in any piece of information that you ever wanted. It's just an informal thing that seems to help other boards function smoother as a body of five or four people to govern together as a one team. And last, there's the other part, is that if a department head, let's just say, had an employee conflict, if they had a board member come to help out with that conflict, they might be able to resolve it at the lowest level, instead of bringing an employee conflict to the entire board, it could be handled by just one board member, for instance. It's just an example. And, you know, I agree with Earl, if they can't be here, at least one person would know a little bit more about what that department was asking for, because they have a close relationship with just that one department. So I just think it'd be better as a team, the five of us group it out, so that we all are responsible for our own one section, so we can be better together.
Now, back to the situation you just mentioned. If the department head was having trouble with an employee, he should be able to resolve it. It's always a department head, team should, but if they cannot resolve it, then they would request, they could talk to any board member, and that board member would get in contact with the president or vice president to call an executive session over personnel matters, and it will be discussed then. If it's only discussed with one board member, one council board member, and the head of the department, and if the head of the department has not been truthful, and that employee is fired because of the actions of, that way, if that happens, we're not involved. The council itself is not involved, as it is between the department head and that's, or his employee, so he can come to us and tell us about it.
I think you might be looking too strict with this, Mr. Campbell. It's not that restrictive, it's just an informal thing to help. It's not that restrictive to stop people from talking and communicating with each other. It's just one little portion of accountability in a team work. That's all it is. No one's going to get in trouble, or we're not violating anything. Is there a motion on the floor?
Well, I still have some more comments.
What?
I, uh, we had them down, as far as I know.
This board has.
When?
I asked him to remember, he said we used to do it. We found out, so I called him, but.
And they get away with it for some reason.
I'm sorry, I don't know.
Well, that's long, I hear, for some reason.
Hey, everyone, I did it before. I was on the board when Taylor was hired as town admin. The town admin kind of took the role of the liaison scoreboard, as far as the commissioner don't have a commissioner admin or anything like that, so they're over top of the first report back, but.
We don't have an admin either. We have special projects.
I know, and her ultimate responsibility is that she operates the department liaison to the boards, so she's still in a position with ten individuals who's usually superintendent. So we have, we have a special project director that should serve the department, head the liaison report back to the board in case they're not here, and I think the adjustment I'm in, in cases where it perhaps not been able to count them, plus different things through the law force, et cetera, just as one example, just to sort of.
Well, then.
Anyway, I just want to remind everybody, we have a very long schedule, so can we make a motion?
Unfortunately, but we do have a long schedule, and to bring this up tonight is kind of, anyway. If I was, if I was the head of a department, and somebody came to me from this council and said, "I'm going to be watching over you. If you need anything, come to me. I will be telling you what to do, and you'll have to follow it. I don't care what the rest of the board thinks about what I'm telling you, you have to do."
That's not.
No?
That's not what this was supposed to be. Again, it's just a little bit of oversight, it's just a little bit of, it's.
It's more like we collect information from each department, so they can break it to the board without being issued, if there is, they should come to the board.
Right, well, I have.
So that liaison, we would just be more or less the information person between the board and the department. That way, the board would be more informed of what's going on.
Well, any of us can be a so-called liaison to any board head.
Right, but I was trying to prevent board members from showing every two weeks to meetings without having any interaction with any department, because there's a lot going on in town, and there's a lot of departments that have a lot of responsibilities to take care of citizens, and if we break it up into five different people, it, once that goes a lot of people, and it's a little work, something like that, it's just easier, instead of just one person or two people, you know, everybody takes a little piece of their pride, and all's settled.
As far as the special project person, this would leave some of the board of her. Have you seen what she has? She has.
Yes, she has, more as of recently.
I'm sorry, can we either have a motion, or can we launch a next topic?
I make a motion. We go away with it, liaison, matter of.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Two? All opposed? Two? Up to you, Gina. It's a tie vote.
Would you consider doing like a, I guess I don't understand. Is there a certain reason other than to spread responsibilities around? Can you put something in writing that maybe help anybody, like agreeing, what you guys might be able to come to some type of agreement on what this actually is? Like, is there a policy in place that you've seen that this is, that could be presented?
Again, it's just an informal thing. I can write something that I'm looking at, if that would help, should I be first? Would that help, should I be first? That's up to them, I just, would that help you if I wrote something down?
I just don't like the idea of too much government involvement.
It's not government involvement, it's all accountability, and that's what we need to do.
We have that accountable for years, as long as we take the law bill, the statute bill, and the bills, the council will agree to it.
I think the written policy would be helpful in order for the department heads to know what expectations of the board member is in regards to that liaison, to make sure that that liaison is not asking those department heads to do additional work that is not approved by the council, and that would be helpful for me in order to be a support or choose to continue to reject the mission of liaison.
Would you like to amend the motion?
I amend the motion, I can amend it.
Chuck, would you like to make a motion?
I actually can.
First, I actually can't hear everything. So, Gina asked if it would be helpful to have a written policy in regards to liaison before she opened on it, and I think it would be helpful for the board to set a policy on what the expectations of the liaison is, to make sure that they're not asking the department heads to do things that have not been approved by the board, and to set the expectation of the department heads, what's acceptable and not acceptable, et cetera. Just some good basis line, whilst some of these facts from this board, for who's had a liaison, because I agree with you, if you're the liaison and you're coming to your department heads to have them approved by the board, be the liaison, this is what you need to do, they're going to do that because they think that's been board approved. So I think that a policy in place to tell the department heads what's the expectation of the board, and for the board members to know what their role is as a liaison, would be helpful if our group, it's urgent asking you if you would amend your motion to that effect.
Yeah, I think we put something in our, you know, as long as you know that, this liaison, they'll make your life miserable if they want to, I'm not saying they must do that, I'm just saying that rules the rules for that. So yeah, if we can amend it to be more specific between a liaison and the department that you're over, as far as what a liaison can do in a line of.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? All opposed?
I'm in favor.
Please, in favor, so the amended motion passes to do a written policy, which I'll have for the next meeting. Next is, well, we might as well talk about the monthly reports that I asked the department heads to do, since we're talking about this now. So I asked the department heads, as an oath, each of them, to do monthly reports, so that each department could know what's going on that month, what they accomplished. I did this because of accountability reasons, I thought it would be better communication between the board and the department head, I thought it would give the department head a sense of accomplishment, it would allow the board to highlight the accomplishments that they had done to the public during these meetings, and it would be a common way for oversight, because we're not in daily contact with the department heads, and then would be able to better kind of realize when the claims come in, what those claims are for, the kind of what the department is doing. Each of the department heads that I spoke to said it was no problem, but I just want to reverse that request, which I had to, and already, and not require that until we do this certain policy and write it down.
So let me just interject here real quick. You said that you went to lay a report, and had on your own, and told them what to do without permission.
I asked them to write a monthly report, and they said they already do it, or sometimes they did do it, but that was a great idea, and so they said, "Sure, I can write a monthly report, that'd be great."
You did not say, "I need a monthly report," did you?
Pardon?
You did not say, "I want you to do a monthly report."
No, I asked them.
Okay, well, I attended one of those meetings, and there was no last name.
Okay.
Okay.
Your opinion?
So I ought to be attending one of them, because that's what I'm going to do, though. I think we'll do something like that, there again, we can do a little bit more transparency.
I just wanted to.
I didn't even want, I didn't even, you know, I don't even have nothing with the best of the chances, I understand that, but we just have to be careful on some areas.
So we'll take all those monthly reports until we do a written policy, and create this formal thing, instead of just an informal, small-town rule thing, but that's fine. Okay, next on this is the police town hall construction update. So we are, we funded an invoice from the ZAC board for $55,000, so we can now move on with the rest of the budget in order to fix and renovate the town hall. The current schedule has probably submitted, because we are waiting for the complete and final election drawings and renewals we did from the HZAC renewals, so this is moving on at a snail's pace, but at least we have the invoice, and that was one of the two things, so hopefully we should be able to submit the permit maybe the next week or so, and then 30 days after that, we should get the approval, and then construction should start, so I think we're currently on moving into that building around July-ish at this point. Is there anything to do in the afternoon?
Rachel, Julie's friend from Rachel was here on Tuesday to look at five of the 10 buildings. They will be back in town the week of the 24th, they don't have dates or times for that yet, but she was here all day on Tuesday, met with some property owners, took some pictures, had discussions, but not in depth. They'll meet with the other five property owners, finish up the construction documents, and then I assume a meet with property owners. I don't have anything date-wise for anything set in stone, but that's where we are. It usually takes about 30 days. Once those construction, construction documents are complete, they'll send them to ship up for Section 1 of 6 review, that typically takes 30 days. I don't know when they're going to send them, maybe March, but right now, it's, we're ready.
So one is an extremely wild ass construction story. Extremely rough, fall, winter, it's fall, and that's very rough, but yeah, fall. Thank you. Next is the recertifying the 2012 election hold ordinance. So apparently, we, I guess every municipality is supposed to approve their, sorry, re-approve or recertify their warrants that they have within their municipality every 10 years after the census is done. So this is an email from our attorney, Mark Flotterman. So Brooklyn didn't do it, a lot of other municipalities also missed the December 31st, 2022 suspense, and there's currently legislation pending to extend that deadline to rectify the problem, but in the meantime, what Lynn is suggesting that we do at this point is to redistrict, is to recertify our existing ordinance that was passed in 2012 that established the five walls. And this question came up because of Brooklyn law's resignation, because we needed to make sure that we were following the right law and understanding what person, what work or workplace you have to live in in order to be appointed to the position. So he, so she says, "In theory, we could also redistrict, but that's a much more comprehensive procedure." She said, "If we feel there's significant changes since the last census," which in the time of Brooklyn, we gained 26 people since 2010, so I don't really think that's very significant, in my opinion, now on open order things, but we can contact someone at the state library, which I followed, I want the message, but she hasn't called back. So at this meeting, Lynn says, "You want to discuss whether you want to redistrict or recertify, and if you want to recertify, I will draft an ordinance for you to pass at the following meeting. If you want to redistrict, we will have to lay out the process and determine the maps." So that's a little bit longer. So, um, so, oh, I guess there's nothing to sign, this is, we just make a decision on whether if we want to redistrict or recertify, and then shield it all, or work on our ordinance for the next meeting.
Wasn't that time we could have redistricted, if it all goes down? Is it very sensitive, or?
I don't know.
If you did mention, like, if we do the A and X Ocean or anything like that, then it would kill the two years, don't say it. What's the kind of happen?
Well, I think she, yeah, she also talked about if there's, if there's any, you know, major changes in the census that.
The district, especially the trust district is a little odd. I've never really understood how that worked, the old, the secondary, the old, to, yes, through straight, but our, by Gina, it just doesn't seem.
So when I looked up the 2012 ordinance, they went by population of that area, whatever was drawn in, because in the ordinance, it states the population of each board.
So, I'll, first something out there, what would be needed to change it all together and have five members run, like, the county heads at large?
Look, the county doesn't have five members running at large, the commissioners are group, and the council is run down by three districts, or, sorry, was it four districts? Five, five districts, and then two running at large, or is it three running at large? I think it's four, I think it's four districts and three running at large, so they have a mix.
All right, but how about something off that? Do you entertain that idea? Any else? I mean, so if we, because in fairness, even if we do not redistrict, there could be two excellent, smart people that are right next to each other, and they would have to have the horn off in the primary, whereas if they're running at large, they might both be able to beat people to go down. I said, this is my view, you know, a positive that I look at.
I, of course, don't think that if we want to redistricting, it's going to be a major, major thing, I think we need to be more deliberate about really looking into it than doing it. I think at this point, we need to recertify, because if we want to redistrict, it's going to be a long-term process, and right now, there's, there's no real reason right now that we should or have to, or there's, you know, there's no justification for it, except that we want to.
I have a question, we look into redistributing.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll say it.
All in favor? All opposed?
In favor.
You're in favor of redistricting?
He said, "Look into it."
Yeah.
You mean to, to explore the idea of this?
Motion passed, we're going to not recertify, so that might impact and then lose replacement, so I'm going to be, I'll have to let Lynn know right now, we chose not to certify. Next, the real financials. So last year, 2022, it looks like our overall revenue for the pool was $84,093.63, and our expenses were $97,775.98, and so our total loss during the year was $13,766.35. dollars and thirty-five cents. Is this more than last year?
Two, five thousand.
Okay, five thousand.
Approximately five thousand, yeah. It was more than eight thousand something like that.
That's right, okay, I think I have one. So at least my intent, I hope the pool is able to be a self-sustaining project in the future. So hopefully, we are able to get more revenue or decrease our expenses somehow for next year. Any questions about the pool report?
No, just to note that I don't believe the pool has ever been self-sufficient, even back to where.
It's important to have those.
There's always operating, right? In the same way, our operating's been good too.
No questions, okay. Next is the golf course financials. Okay, the golf course financials. So I think, you know, I don't know if Jane sent this out to a lot of people. For the, I think the first iteration was the total revenue was four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and eighty-one cents. When I first heard the revenue, I saw that there were golf memberships purchased in December, and so I thought, hmm, are those purchased for twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three? So it's my contention that we subtract the four thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars of the golf memberships that we sold in December and add it into Jane's numbers that were somehow indicated on the twenty-twenty-three report so that we actually get credit for memberships that are bought in twenty-twenty-three on the twenty-twenty-three report. So I don't know how you guys feel about that. As for the expenses, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, eight hundred, sorry, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. And then we have a number of costs that are outside of normal operations, the LLC equipment, pickle maintenance issues, irrigation on the project, for a total of a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and sixty-six cents. And so this also doesn't include our payment for the lease. So if you just look at the revenue, just the normal revenue and expenses, it looks like the golf course did pretty good, maybe made about fifty thousand. But then when you, of course, add the outside costs, then it looks like we lost about a hundred thousand-ish. So obviously, the goal would be to decrease those one-time costs. And since this was our first year, and we had that huge purchase of the golf carts that really set us back quite a bit, you know, really, really put us in the red. So any questions about the golf course? Oh, also, the LLC, they wanted to give us the tax returns from the LLC, which those who else had seen, have seen it now, and they're not going to be released to the public. So it's really the same thing as what Chris said the other day, which if they made about four hundred thousand, we kind of did the same thing. So it's pretty similar.
I think also we need to remember too, now, in the upcoming year, we are going to be running out the building, does the, what used to be the shelter was currently used as a clubhouse, and it's only new clubhouse with repair. But we're going to be running that out again, like it used to be in the past. I know in the past, it was ran out. But I live there probably almost every week, every Saturday night, almost. I don't know what they keep tabs, but I'm sure it did part of a lot of revenue, yeah. So we will have to look forward to coming out this year.
Ron, do you have a plan for the sponsorships? The sponsorship, the LLC has to do your sponsorship, and it's been up for over a year now. Exactly.
Can you come on the mic, please, or?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. It's okay.
You might have to hold that button, Ron, until it turns green.
I'm a karaoke cell. So what we're discussing, the rental of the golf clubhouse? Okay. And you asked one question.
The sponsorships, the whole sponsors, the, there was statewide, I think, stickers on the golf carts and supposedly bought, paid for the advertising, stayed on for a year.
They were out for, since, they were, they were out before I got here. So Jess and I have been working with that, and we're going to go around and either start collecting with different businesses and things like that, the sponsor holes for our golf course, for the town's golf course.
There was one, too, Crazy Dogs, which is now on the top. We had a discussion last year. So he's, I would say, new, I guess, for this year, as far as sponsoring, but that was sort of kind of.
Yeah, he wants, he wants, right, he wants to sponsor a waiting, and he's going to do a yearly.
Yeah.
We haven't, we haven't concluded anything on that, but that's what we're working on for number eighteen. But yeah, we know that that's what we want to work on. Jess and I have been working on it for several weeks, and we just haven't got it accomplished just yet.
So how about work on the whole sponsorship? How is the business that, the business sponsoring hole? Is there something put up that, that are on?
Yes, we'll put, we'll sponsor a hole, we'll put something up that says they would sponsor a hole thirteen, or a hole fourteen, or whatever hole of the desire, hole that they would like. And the only way to get that is to go door to door and go get that. You can't just, sometimes you can call people and see if they want to sponsor. We've got to come to a decision on the fee that we want, that we want to get, because that's not in my, that's not in that I would be able to control. I can present it to the order as to what fee we want to get, and then that would have to be approved before I did any of the labor.
Well, what are you planning on putting up to show this sponsorship? Is it just going to be kind of a dollar sign?
No, no, I think it needs to be a little, little more than that. It's, it's got to be, if it's a yearly thing, I think it's got to be something more than a dollar sign. Personally, that's my opinion.
My opinion.
Hi, everyone.
I think it's got to be made out of very durable construction, not crazy construction, but durable, that will last throughout the year.
The ones that are there now are the monuments, that they have been twelve-by-tall, ten-by-ten pikes.
Nine pikes, yes.
That's kind of a tier-two monuments.
Yeah, so those are still on.
Yeah, that shows the way out of the each.
Right, that's correct.
I don't want to turn this on because I keep, I don't know. But there are some, when we were looking at them, there are some that are on there and some that aren't. So there's, there's some work to be done with those. Even there's one in particular, I took pictures last year, just of when people were having tournaments and their sponsors, just to, you know, put the word out there, I guess. Anyway, there's at least hole, I don't know if we figured it out when we were looking at it, thirteen, twelve, the hole number isn't even on that monument. So for whatever reason, I don't know which one it is, but for whatever reason, there's, it's a picture of what the hole looks like, but it doesn't say the hole, and there's no sponsorship sign. So we've been doing a little more, is the point I'm trying to make. Is it ten?
I think it's hole ten.
Okay.
So I can look out and see. Yeah, I know which one you're talking about, and I think what happened was back before, seventeen's part three, right?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry, yeah, sixteen. So that used to be part four, sometimes I had part fours. And I'm thinking, I always thought anyway, that monument was where the team that used to be for, because back then it was hole nine, but maybe it was hole nine. I just. I think that's, yeah, I think that's what it's, or.
It could be.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that because I'm not familiar with.
The other thing, the LLC looked into doing, when they were doing the sponsorships, they did a two-year sponsorship, committed two years, and you had a different rate than what you did with one. And they also looked into naming rights of the clubhouse, having a business sponsor either the pavilion outside, or when they were going to rebuild the clubhouse, or have the clubhouse open, maybe that clubhouse would be a half-year fee. But for the year that they did the sponsorship, they probably had a little over nine thousand dollars in sponsorship. So that's why I asked today, because you can generate under ten thousand dollars per using some of the sponsorships in our area.
Okay, another thing I didn't bring up is the pond. So with the North Pond, hole fourteen, cover, irrigation drainage issue that I think was discussed last year, but wasn't fixed, and so we definitely need to come up with a plan this year. Well, as if the board agrees that we need to come up with a plan to visit.
Definitely.
I'd like to make a motion that we come up with a plan. Can I say that?
Second. One favor. You're talking about replacing the field, Tom, right?
I'm talking about coming up with a plan to fix the drainage on the entire hole.
On fourteen? Yes. I second.
All in favor? All opposed?
I stand also as close as I have joint power to the hole that she's mentioning, which would impact the drainage, and I probably would have been for that drainage.
So Jess, if you can make sure that we come up with a plan and a dollar amount to an timetable.
The other thing on financials that I have in mind, I don't know if there's an easy way to do this, Jess and Gina, and it probably isn't. The taxes, the taxes that they gave the LLC, it doesn't apply to the donations that they gave out, just because it was, it was wrong and everything, the events, and I guess the same way for us, because at the events, the organizations collect, and they keep, and the last year, the LLC, and it was a little over a hundred and twenty thousand that they brought into the community organization. I don't know if there's a way that when each entity fills or does that, that they have to fill out a report that says how much they brought in so that we can see the one golf course that actually came back to the community. My guess is that was over a hundred and twenty-five thousand last year again. I think you have this here.
We can discuss that as well.
All right.
For this year, so.
Any other questions on the golf course?
So the plan on the rental of the shelter, or whatever it is up there, the only thing that needs to be kept in mind is that that's going to raise liability issues, so there are going to be insurance considerations to rent that thing out. That is going to be additional expenses.
Sure. And last year, there was a question to Paul Monster about that specifically. I can read you the email of his response, but he did suggest that when, when people have events, that they will need to, to give rental insurance as well for the events that they have.
And I'm a little confused when Dave, was it Dave White, as you're talking about the golf course, and he was saying, we don't want a course that this one you got, you know, we're not really, you know, golf course, we have, you know, owning golf, whatever, whatever the discussion was exactly. But he kept saying, you know, there's a way out for you, there's a way out for you. So we've seen financials where they lost a hundred thousand dollars the first year, I guess, that we broke out one stone. So where are we staying with this discussion with Dave White? I mean, he was going to have opportunities to get the town from underneath this, and I haven't heard anything more about any discussion was about it, any consideration about it, so.
About selling the golf course, that to be on.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, so where are we doing that?
I, I would consider that to be an option from my point of view. I don't know how anybody else feels, but my, my point is, we have a golf course, and we need to, I would like to do everything that I can to try to make it work. And if it doesn't work over several years, and we continue to lose and lose and lose, then I think that's when we have a discussion. But after our first year, I don't think is a, is a good time to have that. That's just me. I don't know how anybody else feels.
I agree.
Personally, my first statement, I'm involved with a lot of folks here. I don't want to see my money, good money thrown out the ad or whatever, I'd say, I brought up shaving the LLC whose money it does.
Well, the reason we lost money, I think, is we hadn't paid the LLC a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Well, no, we had actually paid the LLC a ninety-five thousand. Then there was some other expenses that, like Wi-Fi, so, security system, so they were cost outside of normal. And next year, we won't have that cost. So if you don't add those in, the golf course would have made fifty-three thousand. That would have covered the loss from the stormy pool. And with, except, you might have to share with the rentals. And Jess, you know more about rentals, have you talked to some people about rentals? Did we have an idea of you or about what, how much would one of the insurance dollars have been of that?
So we did bring that up, but it, nothing was ever voted on. But yes, we have costs broken down.
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't have a hobby.
Why don't we put it on the schedule for next time, and that way it's less, more damaging. Last thing, there's more to add about the golf course, is this year, we have eleven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four miles of golf, just another data point to use differently after next year. And we also sold a hundred and one memberships. And the vast majority of them are the inclusive family, right?
All inclusive family.
All inclusive, right there.
And memberships are just turnovers from, every year, they buy memberships.
The memberships were down for the year prior to that, they dropped to a hundred and twenty-one the year the LLC owned it before we did. So we were down roughly twenty memberships. So that's just people at the LLC do it, they bought it, use it, or if more people bought inclusive memberships, we changed that family designation, I think that could have been a part of that. The other point that was added is that just because Dave White offers buyback, doesn't mean that they actually can't buy it back. There's still the process that would require the town to pay off that on, very maturely, which would be a double expense that the LLC sold it for. Additionally, several of the LLC members reached out to me afterwards and said that they had had no discussion about the LLC buying it back, and that their members were not interested in buying it back, that they had sold it, they wished they had a level, but they have not discussed buying it back. That was just Dave wanting offering to buy it back.
Moving on, next on this is the resolution of twenty-twenty-three dash one, rules of procedure. So we've talked about this several weeks in a row, nothing has changed from the last ones. Just pointing out that any, one thing that's a little different is that, you know, we have an agenda, but we can change it as long as the president, the vice president, or majority vote, the town council can add or remove items, and any item not on the agenda or added properly according to these rules is not eligible for a vote of the board. So that just means you got to have, you know, at least three people even to agree to consider something that's not on the agenda. And that's just to prevent, like, people from coming up with emergency issues that aren't emergencies, just to ask for a vote. And then the other part that's different, at least, I think I mentioned the last time, is about the two minutes per person. As you can see, it's tentatively, and we are only a couple items in, so if anybody that comes up and talks, if you can keep it to two minutes or less, we'd really appreciate it. We're going to make sure that we get the business of the town finished in the most efficient way. And I did change under the order for business at regular readings, it has number one, roll call, number two, prove of minutes, and number three, old business, and that should be changed to unfinished business. That's what our office rules are, talk about not old business, but unfinished business. And that's it.
So the one question we have, on the agenda items, this is the president's question, the majority vote, can we add or remove items to the agenda? Is that prior to or during?
Just so you have a sensible conversation.
So if it's not on the advertised agenda, we can still add it by majority vote?
Uh, yeah.
All right. I just wanted to make sure, because.
I think so, yeah.
We have, we have two before any two ordinance should fall, for agenda items can be advertised, but we can't do it if there's a majority, because that would mean that we'd have to this house kind of a public meeting. I just wanted to make education that we can still add. I just want the indication that we can still add that it wasn't advertised agenda, because it, it seems like it contradicts itself. Because it says any item on the agenda, prior to the public voting, the rules not allowed to vote before the board.
So if you want to talk about something, you can talk about it, it's not on the agenda, that's not the issue. The issue is it's called for a vote. If you want to talk about something and actually vote on it, before you can call for the vote, you have to get three others to even consider it to be on the agenda, then.
Well, we, we can add, because that's outside of public meeting only, I can't call.
This is all in a public, the agenda's published before the public.
Right, it says that if, if only added to the agenda, on majority vote.
During the public meeting.
But then it says it's not added on, or it's not on the agenda, it's not helpful. I just want to make sure that before we decide, the two, any two board members besides the president or VP could call. So if I can ask something, I know that I can, I can call you and Chuck and say, will you guys put this on the agenda? If you have, if I have like a little rule of, that's why we have that too. And so if. If I have to add to the agenda, I can't, and you don't want it, or Elizabeth won't it, but I can't get Chuck or a new person to get us to vote the rule of election. Chuck actually able to call for somebody to add to the agenda, so it's advertised to the public.
This is meant to be during public meeting, not, uh, any, Gina has, has anything ever, when you add things to the agenda, do you require someone else to say, add to the agenda?
We have it passed.
Gina?
Currently?
Yeah.
I just think that's an agenda.
You just have to.
I know, yeah. It's only if it's something that is coming, uh, documented, you know?
That, that's what these, that's what this is referring to.
With someone that's requested to be passed, I did last year, and they asked me on the agenda. I would say no, Brooke would say no. Unless two other board members called in and actually put it on, and then over, they'll go, we, because two board members can't talk to another person, three board members can't say no, and then call a third board member and say, say no, well. That's what I'm saying, so if you, you know, three people call for agenda, that means that you have had a fire discussion, and that you have violated a little rule of, if you don't, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Exactly, you need to. Hurst, exactly, me, it's not.
I understand, I understand that, I'm saying that if there's, if I call her and I want something on the agenda, I call her on the vote, say no, I have no recourse to put something on the agenda. And if I call Chuck or the other, um, board member, and they would say yes, but no, we could, under our old rules, put something on the agenda and bring it to the vote, because I can't call two other people outside of the public meeting. That's violating the open rule of, you guys have always parked on, that's violating the open rule of, so I'm trying to make sure this will shut up as it was before, for that, it hurts to not violate the open rule of. That way, if I call you, I call her, technically I violate the open rule of, because I request something to be on the agenda. If I call one board member and they say yes, then it's allowed, and we have violated the open rule of. That's all I'm saying, is that this way, right here, will restrict anybody that the president or vice president can call from adding, we can call the advertised agenda, so that it's helpful for the public to, and some days won't be discussed at that meeting.
Like this is being, you know, just during the meeting, ask for something, then you can discuss it, we want to allow it.
Then I think we need to ask something on there that says, well, we can add to the agenda, then who, who calls it?
Not before, during.
What happens is, for me, if I have something on the agenda, there's no policy that says I can just call in and add it to the agenda.
I see what you're saying, yeah.
So there needs to be a policy about adding to the agenda, I was.
As far as, as far as I'm concerned, I'm pretty sure anybody that calls Gina says, oh, we have a chance.
That's not the case of how it was before, we, we, we had rules of procedure on how to add to the agenda.
So Gina never added anything to the agenda without a board member saying she could.
Once we pass the rules of procedure, she would know.
Once we pass those, those were repealed at the beginning of the.
Of the year, so right now, there's a rules procedure on how we add to the agenda, that's what I'm trying to add back to. So that way, I'm not, to use violating the open rule of, if I have to ask you, we're just to add them to the agenda, because that's the way it was, that was the task. If the board wishes that any board member can add anything to the agenda, I'm okay with that, so long as we have written policy and our rules of procedures to reflect that.
I see what you're saying. You and I would agree on how to put on, if you call me, you'll need a third person.
Right.
Then you got to add it, but if something comes on during the meeting, we can add.
Then.
A lot of people would add it.
Then it falls this procedure during the meeting, prior to meeting, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So it's not being there, allowing.
So why don't we add before the last sentence, any item on the agenda, write it properly, why don't we add, uh, forty-two schools during the meeting is not eligible for a vote of the board, that's right, during the meeting. And then we say, part of the meeting. Agenda items. Here we add. Do you agree on?
I put it on, put it on, put it on.
Uh, president, vice, forty-two members. If I, I gotta break that in, can you assign us?
All meeting motions to the third resolution 2023 dash one, as amended, and delighted with the registered notes on our hearing.
I'm sorry, now.
On here, all opposed, motion passed. Gina, I'm not sure how to do this, A, I was amazed, which is a number, or do you do that? Or, oh, I put it four one zero, okay. Next is John Moore with the public interaction.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, John.
Um, I gave a little handout, that's basically some slides we could use to talk to a lot of golfers. Uh, let's bring out a little speed that they, uh, don't remember all yet, or exactly started two years ago. And, uh, just as then, now, same thing, we were always in rush, uh, Hertz, if you remember this. They said that, hey, this thing opens on September sixth, we can't figure the application about, but I want. So we're going to do that, uh, but I made this note on the first page, if you want to take a look at it, that originally what the local organization said, we had to look at Brookfield and Frank County together, which are part of the funds, and set aside thirty percent of that. So essentially what happened was the county side set a million aside, and rural side five hundred thousand aside of our funds. And that's, and that's also kind of the ratio of the rural counties in the way, about two thirds of the oil to Frank County, or a little bit of rural. Uh, so, and also state's budget, another million dollars matched that, so essentially about one point six, something like that. Million, or a county, and about eight hundred thousand plus or minus will go into the, into the town. Any projects that that town council's done, they'll follow. Uh, also, to get that done, we have to go ahead of time. We have to get the county and the town to commit to the $10,000 each towards the community board in itself. If we hadn't done that, uh, we would have been totally lost out. But luckily, that didn't happen, originally there were twelve grants available. And if you go to second page and find out that for some reason, over the side of the early in the nine, we would still want to win from that, which I can certainly say, it's out, because the ninety-two counties and all the communities across the state, for us to win one, nine, it was a great one. It was a little gritty, though, uh, for those of you who don't know. The last day, I'm about the first week of working on this thing, uh, Hertz was madly dying, and I was chasing the documents, and the last thing I remember doing was standing in Brookfield, waiting for Tom, I was breaking traffic. For, you know, preparing, so we signed the last piece of, uh, evaluation. And we got it in, I think noon that day, we had a little at three or something like that, so we actually got it in early, but we were sort of, we get it all done, because there's a lot of documentation, if you want, both the conference of management of the town, conference of the county, I was like, I don't remember how many documents we had to have.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you could just bring us up to speed with what we're doing now, an hour moving forward.
Absolutely, we go on to the next two slides.
Okay, sorry, just wanted to.
Quite all right. That's quite all right. By the way, the picture in there, that is December first, they decided to develop an existing, uh, core team up, and that was Shelley, uh, Lon, Virginia, Jess was part of this, and we got the lieutenant governor, which is for major security. So, so now, this program is designed to teach us how to work together, hoping on the end. So we just go past that, but there's more pathways, so they want to help us learn how to spend this money. Uh, first one is advanced heat and activity, all of us do is, do we have Wi-Fi internet available, people, and do they know how to use it? And do they have devices that will help them actually do something on the internet? So this is not just my project, going around to the program, to try and figure out how we can bring everybody to speed, how you should best put them to start a business, or they just want to use it at home. But that's part of it, and I'm going to have. And number two, uh, community wants, they really want us to try to take a look at what they have healthy community. The healthy community actually gives you a little bit like a healthy economy as well. Some things, I had, there's examples, and for instance, we got three good hospitals trying to do good things here. Try accounting student, try health, uh, arbitrary, we put a new facility on the hill. Problem is, it's telling a lot of people that don't have access to the board of healthcare, so they want to pursue that as well. If you take a look at our county special, we find that that was their quality place, that's the third thing. And that means what we have here in the community makes you want to live here. Uh, the pool is a good example of the kind of things they're looking for, uh, does that, people like that. That's going to be a little bit subjective, but, um, we will be looking at all of those things. But also, things of all of that, uh, are we helping, or we're not helping? Those are things we have to tackle, uh, with, uh, pathway teams. There's four thousand, considering things that are for people to go down here. Uh, somebody making $12,000 hourly, or $600 a month, somebody making $50,000, $40,000, $600 a month. So depends on whether you mean affordable. The last thing, certainly, on, and that's the one that is going to be the most challenging, is there's a lot of things you can do. Uh, the state has to go over those to help figure out those things. So what we're doing right now, again, on a very, very basis, they have, we have a little more to, to have done a lot of, uh, engagements, and also the, we have a survey out online right now. And so we have to, that, and we have all this information, and we found a couple of these ones, community council a week ago, and we did, uh, yesterday, compared the students' library for Brookville mostly, but we're people from all over. Kevin Edes, we're asking people, give us ideas, what they would like to see, and I think these four airports. We will then pile those, and those will then be passed on to our four pathway teams, and they're going to work with a university, each one of these, so for instance, I just text, will be the I. Purdue will be the, uh, even activity, all state will be all in place, and IU will be the one for the community funds. So the team will take that information, we have two meetings to come, and from that, we should be able to prioritize some projects to be looked at. Those will come back to the board committee, and then we'll look at it again, form of representation, and then we present it to the town council and the commissioners on the political table, ideas I want to do in town, which will be helpful. So we're not, that's where we are at the moment.
Sorry, just want to make sure, Adam, of the board, as I said, um, that the core team chose John to be the community coordinator, did? That's why I said, and everybody needs to choose that, so we put in $10,000, so John's giving $40,000 for his salary this year, just to make sure everybody knew, uh, this is announced at the commission meeting, and thank you for coming, John, I appreciate that. Um, so I expect, what, for this floor, at least, what is that, will he be coming back to keep us informed about the, the whole program as the community coordinator, or as the community coordinator, or even train town employees, or how does that, or are you just sending the recordings to the county, or how is that, or?
Actually, I'm recording mostly, uh, the, the sort of salary and things like that, though, the county's going to be holding all that. Have to submit timesheets like that for times to move in, but as far as the job itself, there's a lot of coordination in this whole process. First, just like I said, we're collecting all this information now, I'm coordinating that. But all the core teams, all you were meeting yesterday, and so it was just, and Seth Shelley was a part. Uh, and then making sure that this information is put together, put in the hands of the pathway teams, pathway team meeting with the, you know, which is our hearts, getting that information back, the whole thing through this coordination, make sure this project is working, stays on track. And the final, the final thing for everybody knows, we have to have a strategic investment plan, not just saying, we're going to spend money. But we have to have a plan, it's just how we're going to do that. And so that's culmination of this whole thing, and that's what the coordinator is supposed to do, is to get to that point. Make sure that, hey, everybody's working together, that nobody's going off on the hand.
Right, just want to make sure that the town, or this floor, this council, is included in that, in that process, not just my personal input into the core team, not, I want everybody to hear what we're doing.
Like I said, I was kind of going through the explanation. The, 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 just make sure the, for the athletes, the athletes who work hard, where it's, come back to the core team, where not further narrowing priorities, and all the H report, add to the council, let you decide what is really important for Brookville. So all along, we have communication back there. There'll only be necessarily weekly communication, but probably more like monthly, or.
That will be just.
Depends on the progress.
Thank you.
Well.
Next, next we have fourth question, and it's taken a minute, if you can please.